Okay, guys, my watch says 6:00.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Number three, approve agenda. You have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make the motion.
There will be, I'm sorry, at 6:30, we will stop and open the bids for the Seal Code. Right at 6:30, so, and that's on number seven. Go ahead.
Okay, I will make the motion to approve the agenda with that 6:30 stipulation.
I'll say goodbye.
We have a motion in the second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. For the minutes of the March 5th and 19th meetings.
I may make a motion to approve the minutes of the March 5th and 19th meetings. I'll say, Dave, a motion.
We have a motion in the second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Alcesther Bard, Presa.
Yes. I just, I just want to know if there's any money in the liquor store budget to replace, like, a dozen bar stools. We have stapled them and nailed them and screwed them back together. The backs keep falling off, and there's just nothing to work with anymore. So, I mean, we, they're falling apart in bad shape, and I just don't want nobody to, you know, be leaning back and all of a sudden they're on the floor and get hurt.
Do you have a supplier that you can get them from?
I don't. I, you know, I just looked a little bit, but I don't care whatever kind that, well, and there's a lot of heavier people that sit on them, and, you know, I, I just don't want nobody getting hurt with the bad ones. So, it, I figured if we, a dozen, and then we could, you know, there's still some that are still usable, but, you know, I, I don't, I'm not even, I don't care what kind they are as long as they work.
Well, yeah, they've got to stand up.
And they're sturdy.
Yeah, they've got to stand up to the.
Right, because the screws keep coming out, the nails keep coming out, and Barry keeps trying to fix what he has, and so, I have no idea how old they are. I know they've been there a long time.
Well, we've talked about this a couple times. I brought this up, and I guess, I don't really know what precedent has been set in the past. Maybe there has been, maybe there hasn't. Can anybody that's been around for a while? I mean, have we ever put new stools in or replaced? We've put equipment in the, in the bar, coolers. We've replaced furnaces and air conditioning, but as far as furnishing is go like that, to my knowledge, we haven't done that.
I don't remember anything. I guess I've been around by the lonesome. I was looking through the plan, planning the budget for the liquor store.
I did not put any money in 2018 budgets for bar stools.
Did you get cost or even an idea when you were looking around?
It, they range anywhere from 100 to 150 a chair. The only reason I came here is because if I buy them when I decide to retire, then they're mine. That's the only thing. We had this problem before when I asked, last time I was at the bar and I asked for tables, and they said, "No." So, I said, "Okay." So, I went to an auction and I bought really nice wood tables. They're still there because the city bought them back from me when I decided to, well, when they put the bar up for bids last time. So, the city did buy those from me. But, I mean, you know, it's up to you guys. If you want to buy them, they will stay there. But if I buy them, whenever I retire, I probably will take them with me, or you'll have to buy them from me if you want them. I don't know. I mean, I, I just don't know how, how this works this time.
I don't know, very. I guess, I guess, I would like to check on some prices and see what we can come up with and figure out if we can find some money in a budget someplace for them.
I mean, they need to replace.
I don't think we can do anything tonight because we have no information.
No, we'll have to look and get costs.
See what the cost is.
I, hey, that's fine with me. Just let me know. I just wanted to make you guys aware that there are some really bad ones. You've been in there, Nate, before.
I've seen them, yeah, they're, they're rough. I mean, some of them I leaned back and I thought I was going over, so.
Do you want the kind that falls into the floor or do you want them moved?
No, you've got to move them because we've got a mop.
Do they need to swivel or just?
It don't matter. I, like I said, I don't care. Whatever's cost-effective and sturdy works for me.
Okay, so, let's do this. We'll check into prices.
Sounds good.
At the next meeting, we'll know what the cost would be and we'll make the decision then.
Okay, thank you.
There you go, sorry.
Okay. Planning Commission, public hearing, 6:15. We're not, 6:15.
Dennis Jones is appearing there.
Let's see, and we've got to open the bid at 6:30. Let's jump down to number eight, Townhouse Apartments, Dennis Jones.
He's not here yet.
He's not here yet? Okay.
We can do a public input.
What's that?
Public input, number nine.
Oh, okay. Public input.
I do, Nikki Larson. In front of you, you will find there was a question concerning the website, and that will answer the question that Ms. Councilwoman Kai and I had via the correspondence on the Internet. In the past, in the lease for the bar, the chairs are personal tea as opposed to real tea, and that's a responsibility of the bar to take care of that. In the planning and zoning, that, there is an error on the map. I've already talked to Pat about that. There's also on page, excuse me, 15 and 21, I believe. It deals with corrugated roofing. You might want to take a look at that one again and reconsider because a lot of folks are going to corrugated roofing. The other thing is, is roofing that has solar panels in it. A lot of folks putting solar panel roofs up, and that's not addressed in here, just so that you know. The other thing is, that I had, was, again, planning and zoning. If you're going to have rules for zoning, the other part of the document that you see is a complaint that I made, and I stated the ordinances, and nobody got back to me. I filed the complaint, I did it up paper, I turned it into Mr. Phillings' news. He didn't bother to get back to me. I sent an email, which you'll see there too. I still haven't heard back as to the disposition of the complaint. If you're going to allow certain people to walk on complaints with your planning and zoning, you better take another look at your, your zoning ordinances. And I have given input in many times, and I get some nods, "Yeah, yeah," and I get blown off. So, that's everything I have, and be sure to read my blog.
Are you sure that's all you want me to address? Did you want to address anything else that you? I'm sorry if you can't hear me very well. Did you want to address anything about the way the survey was conducted?
Um, the survey? If you're going to conduct a survey, it should be what I would call a scientific survey. Having the elementary school children give whether they want a diving board or a slide or whatever, they don't vote and they don't pay the bills. This, the diving board versus the slide has been addressed in the past. That's a small pool. Having a slide on there, it has certain specifications that it has to be. You put the diving board back where the diving board was, and you want to tag a slide in there, you're going to run divers into sliders. Again, as it was framed, it was unclear whether the pool personnel, if you were having a slide, specific personnel watching that or if it was going to be, they're going to have shared duties on watching the rest of the pool and that. You need to be more specific on that. And liability, I noticed on the agenda that there was a thing that dealt with Beersford. If you're going to be installing that and having our guys do it, there's an issue of liability on that when you self-install. If you have a company that's bonded for that, that's fine. That, any liabilities can drop down on them, but if you have somebody install something that has a very real potential of possible injury and you have our guys do it, that you may want to rethink that.
Okay, the, first of all, the survey was done at the school for the purpose of asking the people, the kids that use the pool the most, what they would prefer. There was also, in every business around town, if you went into any of our businesses, there's a flyer that was put up that has a picture of the slide, it has a picture of the pool, it had, or the slide and the diving board. It has a cost of each one separate. It could have been any adult that looked at them. I had, now at the store, I had a lot of adults come up and give me their opinion of it, and that's all on this list of who wants what. So, it wasn't just little kids. It was parents and other adults that have all voted on this, and there was plenty of information put out for them to vote on, so.
Are they taxpayers? Are they, are they listed in the taxpayer rolls? Do you have that information on your survey? You call it a survey. If you're going to call it a survey, semantically, a survey has, a survey, you can ask opinion poll, but a survey indicates it's a little more specified. And that's all I'm saying, that, hey, if you're going to call it a survey, better walk like it and talk like it and quack like it.
I don't know about any of the other council people, but from my point of view, it was going to be an either/or. We were never going to consider both.
Yeah, and, and I'm looking at the agenda, and the agenda has changed that, so that negates your opinion poll.
There is a possibility to get a small slide that can be put in the chowder end for little kids that came, that Beersford has over at their pool. And there's a possibility to buy that. We would never put that near the pool at the deep end for little kids. That, if you looked at the picture of it, it's just for real small kids.
Yes.
Yeah, that one.
Is that a picture of the actual slide? Okay, I did not see that one. When they discussed the.
We haven't, we haven't purchased it. We're just going to discuss it tonight.
And what I'm saying is, when they discussed a slide in the past, the slide, the slide had to go into a certain footage of water to keep from, from, from injury. And that was specified, and that was on a specific slide. Like I said, it's, it's specific, and, and liability gets to be a specific thing. And you don't want to be messing with that, not with kids involved.
Okay.
And is there a weight limit on that slide? There's a weight limit on the diving board, but is there a weight limit on that slide? How much do you know about that slide other than Beersford had it put in?
Okay. Thank you. 6:15.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Maybe there's some other public input.
Yeah, I had, actually. Did you want to discuss the, you also mentioned your concerns about increased pool fees. Did you want that addressed?
No.
No, okay.
I actually had some public input, too. If you can figure out more, I'm sorry.
Sorry about that.
The manner in which the survey was tallied, did you want to address that?
No, it's, it's irrelevant.
The city website, is there anything else you want to say about that?
Um, we don't have a city website.
So, the website that we do have, like, if you Google Alcesther, there is a website that comes up. Is that considered a city website? Is there something we can do to that website to bring it up to date, to make it more interactive?
There is things that we can do to that website. Currently, it was designed under the Commercial Club, i.e. Chamber. And yes, if we revamp it, it will become a city with a page for the Chamber.
It would need to be declared the official website of the city. And with that in mind, you would be publishing all city minutes and city announcements and making available city documents on that website per statute.
You also mentioned, I'm not really sure how to take it because it wasn't well elaborated on, frustration with a so-called middle woman. Did you want to address at this time who that middle woman was, what the specific frustrations are, and what the council can do to solve that concern?
I mentioned that in the, in the context, excuse me, in the context of city-based emails.
Yeah.
So that people can have direct contact via email with each individual councilwoman or councilman instead of getting it through the finance office or any other secondary informational thing. And the purpose of the city-based email, so that you don't get, that isn't confused with a private email, that, that folks know for certain that that's going to a city, a city-directed email.
Okay, so just to clarify, the middle woman was finance officer, during?
Well, that's, that could be one. There's, they could go through the mayor. That'd be another.
So, it's just an issue of convenience?
Interpretation, interpretation.
You were just more concerned about the convenience? Like, there's nothing, nothing that she has specifically done wrong that has upset you? You're just concerned about the convenience of the citizens?
No, because if it was something she did wrong, I would be very plain and very blunt about it.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify because it wasn't well stated in the message. You mentioned also that the survey was a guise. Were you concerned that we were trying to achieve something else by issuing this survey? I wasn't really sure what to interpret.
No, it was just in, in the method of.
Okay, so you weren't concerned that the council was trying to, or the mayor was trying to get something else out of the survey?
No.
Okay. You've also meant, in the, I'm still referring to the Facebook post in case anybody's confused. You mentioned that you have witnessed questionable acts by council members, namely fuzzy numbers and perhaps concerns that your complaints or other citizens' complaints were not being taken seriously. Since 2012, obviously this is before my time, so I just need you to clarify because I honestly don't know.
Okay.
And also, you said something about the blatant lack of the implementation of the website is evidence that the public input is not worth much.
Well, the, the thing is, is that the public input was, or I'm sorry, excuse me. The website was voted on and talked about. I have that in your documents back in 2014. And nothing's been done about it. And the website is the first, first line of defense for open government, that people can go without having to go into the finance office and, and feel compelled to tell folks why they want to do it. And I, and I realize that's a natural reaction. I want to look at such and such, and, well, why? And I'm not saying that they did it, but, but they, they need to feel comfortable about going in and looking at documents. And if they're up on the website, that it's there.
Is that required? We have to have a website?
Anybody know?
I don't think you have to have a website.
As long as it's published in the newspaper. But just as a matter of convenience.
Yeah, but you got, the, the council voted on it. It's there.
That's right.
It, it was a decision a previous council made. Website, most cities have websites. I'm sure Beersford has them.
They do.
And, and, and like I said, that it's, it's a way for the public so they don't, they don't have to chase their tails and come down to the city office and oopsie-doodle, they, it's closed. And then they have to make a second trip or a third trip. It's convenience and it's clarity of government.
Does anybody on the council know why this never happened? Or was the website that was put up, was that thought to be, like, did people think that that was the solution? Or was something else decided upon?
Just as a lack of, when that was voted upon, I was a city councilperson, and shortly after that, I took this chair. And just learning the job and it is, was not on the priority list for me to complete.
Okay. Is there something that we can do about it now?
Yes, we can.
Is that something we need to motion again or how do we take care of it now?
I think it would be a good idea for us to verify that we have to have it. If we do have to have it, I mean, I realize that this has been voted on in the past. Lots of things have been voted on in the past. It's irrelevant, that's history. What I want to know is what we have to do legally. That's what I want to know. And I think you gentlemen can probably help answer that. Whether you can do that in five minutes or five days, I don't care. But I want to know what are our requirements? And then we'll go from there.
Okay. And then, anything about fuzzy numbers? I just noticed that that was something you brought up. You were concerned about the council floating fuzzy numbers around or?
No. Not that I'm, not that I'm going to comment on right now. The thing is, is that there is a possibility of a motion to compel to follow through on something that the council has already voted on.
I think that was all I had. Unless you can think of something else that I did not address that you wanted addressed.
While I wasn't directly involved in it, I did read over the discussion part that came to us on Facebook as well. I had a couple concerns I wanted to address from that presenting, not necessarily as a city councilperson, but as a citizen. One of the comments made on there was that all surveys should be conducted via mail. I don't think that's appropriate anymore for the age we live in. As someone who runs a blog, I'm sure you know too the importance of social media in our, in our current society. If someone mails me something and it requires me to mail it back or drop it off somewhere, there is about a 1% chance I am going to do that survey. If I can sit on my couch and answer it in five minutes from the comfort of my own home, sure, I'll do it. I don't care, I'll answer surveys all day. My point is that physical media mail is no longer in and of itself a viable option. It's just not anymore. You have to have social media involved. You have to have different options involved. You have to have, you know, even, even phone surveys are going out of the way of popularity because they're just not relevant anymore. And I would, I would venture a guess that I, I'm not the only one who would be far more likely to answer something online than in person.
In the context you bring that up, it was brought up to put it on the, the water bill to reach the taxpayers. And again, what you presented, yes, postal is, postal is going by the wayside. But if you have a website, you can tag a survey to the website.
True. And I agree on that. I think it would be very good to have an update.
It puts us, it puts us in the 20th century or 21st century rather than slogging away.
So, if you have a survey on your website, what's to keep one person from putting in 150 votes?
You tag it with the, you can't prevent that, but the thing is, as a town like this, the, the number is about 300 and some returns of the survey. If you're going to, you know, if you're going to do a formal survey, do a formal survey. You know, my point, my point in the survey was, if you're going to go to the effort of attempting to do a survey, do it right. And, and that, that includes, like I said, if the folks are interested, they'll answer. And, and Julia, if, if they're not interested, they won't. But you will have, in, in that respect, you will have a composite of who did feel compelled to answer it and who didn't. And you take that, you take that information and you apply it to whatever decision you make.
Well, on the Facebook pool page, we had 67 people reply to the survey.
Or you might have had one person reply 67 times.
Well, that could be, that could very well be. I have no way of knowing that.
It would be very difficult for us to create 60 Facebook pages.
Yeah. On Facebook, you do know. There's a name associated with it.
That's true.
So, each vote has to be from a separate Facebook page?
No, responded.
Each respondent had to be, yeah, okay.
And I shared, I shared the one off of the pool Facebook page onto the garage sale website. I cannot give you an accurate number. Some people believe it, their responses. I'm assuming because they were tired of getting notifications every time someone commented. My last count was five, and they were all in favor of the board. And I don't know how many deleted theirs, but everyone who did delete their comment also supported. I had no comments for sliding.
Well, no, we wouldn't have gotten Rachel Staliker and her three children's input if it hadn't been for that Facebook posting.
Right.
So, they're four votes toward one. I mean, we can argue how to do it all day long, but we don't have the luxury of spending the kind of money that some larger cities have. So, we're going to make do with what we can legally do. End of story. So, I, I thank you for putting it on. As soon as you put it on there, I immediately talked to a number of people, and I know some people that actually shared it, and, and they, they agreed with the method, so. Yeah, I had no issue with it being published. I thought that was a good way. Mr. Mayor, can we go back to number six?
Sure, we've got about two minutes to do it. That's, you know, 6:30.
Oh, that's right.
They have to open the Seal Code bids.
That's true. Yep, sorry.
Dennis is here.
Dennis is here, and then we can do that. Which one?
Dennis.
Okay, Dennis, can you? Do it in two minutes? Okay, not a problem. Are you? Come on. I guess I'm here because of the auto shop here and all the junk cars and junk stuff. And I was told a while back they're on the radar. I don't know where the radar is, but I think something needs to be done there. We have 12 apartment houses up there, and when you walk out and look at it, and I wish all of you to go up there someday and walk out and look at it. It's an eyesore. And it's an eyesore with people coming into town, and it needs to be cleaned up. And, and what prompted me with this is I read a deal on the advertisements for spring cleanup, and we're going to start taking batteries and used oil to his place. I don't know why we want to add to the junk. And it's posted at the bank. So, I guess I'd like to know where we're at with getting it cleaned up. Any other questions?
Jeff Dillings has been very aware of that property. Every year, we drive by it. And the only thing that I can say for this year is that you will notice that it, it has improved since it was, since last year. And Jeff's stance is normally, if he sees some improvement, he does offer some leniency there. If he sees no improvement, then there is more communication that happens. Now, last year or late fall, the owner of that business did go through surgery for the back. So, he has not been as evil-bodied as he could have been. I know he was looking at different fence options, but when the back boom came into play, that the possibility of him selling the business also is greater. So we'll visit with him in the spring when we go through and do our rounds and see what his plan is. At this point, I have not talked to him about it.
Well, as far as his bad back, I feel for him on that, but it doesn't take a good back to tow them cars and trucks and tractors and snowmobiles and campers out of there.
Part of what went wrong with the back was that that his CEO was put on hold.
Well, there's other people who can tow them out of there. And I really believe it needs to be cleaned up. And it's been gone on long enough. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you. Okay, guys, six thirty. We have to open the bids. All right. This is the bids on seal coating. Top coat out of Yankton. The bid on that is 1.97 per square yard using granite chips. We have three bids this year. Last year, I think we only had two. The Road Guys out of Yankton also 1.95 or 1.75, I'm sorry.
First square yard?
Yep.
Do they specify what they're going to use for?
I'm sure it does. I think, didn't we specify what they?
Yes, we gave them bids specs.
So all of these will be for the same granite chips then?
Okay.
Do they have bid bonds, both of them so far? Do they have bid bonds with them?
Is this what you're looking for?
Yep.
Yep.
I'm assuming that, yeah.
Okay.
They're required to have a bid bond.
Okay, sure. And I'm sure it doesn't have the same thing. Is that what you're looking for?
That's insurance.
That's insurance.
Oh, wait, here's another page for that.
Yep.
I'm sure that's. That looks like. There's that insurance too.
Yeah. Just want to make sure they've got, there's that 10% bid bond.
Okay, so that's submitted.
That's the first one. Let's verify the second one right now while he continues.
He did.
He did already.
Yeah. I can see it worth it. Let him touch it.
All right. And this one, Asco Asphalt.
Could you repeat the name, please?
And this one is 299. It looks like.
199.
Looks like, oh, one, yeah, I'm sorry. That is a lot.
Tom, what was the name of that third company?
This is.
Asphalt servicing company.
Thank you.
It's 199. Tom, is this what you're looking for?
I'm sure it is. Okay, I'll take that and put it in here. That's supposed. That goes for those asphalt, yep. They were 199. Correct. They've all got bid bonds.
Okay, so we went from 175 to 199, all right?
Lonnie, do you have experience with any of these three?
Well, we have Road Guys last year, right?
Yep.
Satisfied? Working with them?
Yeah, we're good.
Well, the Road Guys was the was the generous with a bunch.
I'd bet.
4,400 bucks. I would make the motion to accept Road Guys at $1.75 per square yard.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to accept Road Guys at $1.75 a square yard. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carried. Now, planning commission hearing, we're a little bit late on it, but motion to approve first reading in 2018 planning and zoning ordinance.
Actually, we have Patrick Andrews. He is from Seacock. He was the gentleman that walked us through each step of rewriting our planning and zoning ordinance.
So I have a lot of paper for everyone, of course, because that's what I do.
Well, thank you for waiting on us.
No problem. I just have to be out by seven o'clock. I would be in Marion at eight. But don't feel free to continue on beside me. So we got together to do this because your current zoning ordinance is from the mid 90s or so?
Seventy-two.
Seventy-two, oh, longer than I thought. So it's quite outdated, so we figured it's time to bring things up today. Zoning is never perfect. It's kind of a process as you you, it's, there's always more to be done, so you're ultimately working towards making things better the more you do. So this is what, we met as a as a small group, various council peoples, other interested people, and that's what we came up with. It's probably not perfect, but it's a starting point. That's the purpose of public hearings is that everyone from the public provides input, and hopefully we get something good out of it that works for everyone. So zoning is implemented by putting properties in lots into districts, and districts have their own certain rules. And what those rules are come from the zoning map. So whatever your lot will be assigned a district, and then the ordinance would contain the rules for that district. So it should be one of the per county as well. So for the most part, everything is the last draft I sent with the addition of signs have become complicated because of the Spring Court case read versus Gilbert. You can't order real estate signs by their content. You can't call a real estate sign a real estate sign or a yard sale sign a yard sale sign. You have to strictly look at time, place, manner. So it can be there. It has to be a permanent sign there for, I guess, forever, and it has to be in a certain condition. It can be certain size, that kind of thing. So each district would have a different size, and lots with houses would have different size treatments than commercial businesses, that kind of thing. So that's in there. Whether the size or sizes are right or not is something for you all to input on. I imagine business owners would have some input on what size their sign would be. And telecommunications towers are a very complicated area of federal law with FCC regulations. So I tried to incorporate the main things. There's a lot of work on. You have to have things done in a certain amount of time, or you basically are out of luck. You have to have an application submitted and complete in 30 days or deemed approved. Certain things have to be done in 60, 90, and 150 days. It's complicated, and hopefully all that's in there. So it's, the chances of you getting a tower probably are somewhat slim, but it's good to have them just in case you do. If anyone has any comments on your zoning ordinance, we can surely listen to them, and hopefully
Here's one.
the board will consider.
Question or confirmation. That was brought up earlier.
Okay.
This parcel right here is our, it's a joint building. It's a commu, it's a store.
Okay.
Food pantry. And there's a massage business in that building.
Isn't the paper, the newspaper office in there?
He, an office, yes. So I can't remember if during our meeting we talked about that building and how we left it, or if that does need to be converted.
It's currently residential, so what's in there now would not be any of the uses in the residential district, so it'd be all non-conforming, which means it can stay. You just can't expand or do anything beyond minimal maintenance. So if there are other districts that would be more suitable for those uses, I imagine probably central business would include most of those.
But then you can add to put central business way down there by itself.
A little bit, yeah. I mean, it's in some way. I guess it's kind of a central business adjacent, I guess. But, yeah, it just kind of be hanging down there.
There's an alleyway in four lots between it.
Yep. So it can, I.
So it's not an issue since it's there now?
Correct.
It's, will just be a non-conforming business that cannot be added to?
Yes.
From now on?
Correct.
If I may, as I understand the wording in the zoning, that if that should cease in operations, then that would have to go back to residential instead of the non-conforming. Am I not correct?
Should it cease in operations, correct. And I think that's usually a cease for a year or so, I think, when you say that's.
Okay.
Or if the building burns down, then, yeah, there are, I think, five or six things that terminate the non-conforming.
Patrick, when we were doing this, we were discussing roofing materials.
Yes.
And we were talking about not using corrugated metal roofing. And by that, we meant, you know, wavy kinds of things that they use to put on barns, correct?
Correct.
How does that, how is that different than the kind of metal roofing that is now used on many structures, including houses? How, what would you call that? Is that in the definitions?
It would not be in the definitions. I'm trying to remember where we put that. It would be in 10 dot 11 C on page 36. We just put that as corrugated metal. It's not a permitted roofing material. But corrugated metal is not defined in the back, but we can add a definition if that's particular beyond just the standard understanding of.
For Tyson metal roofing that normally goes on a house is not corrugated metal. Corrugated metal is almost.
It's the wavy kind.
The wavy kind.
It's a wave of reinter, too.
Yeah. And it it isn't painted like brown or red or whatever. It's almost galvanized, I guess is the word. It looks more galvanized.
Corrugated.
So like that house over there, that would not be considered corrugated?
What they have in front of them is kind of, is a modify.
Corrugated is the.
It may be different than the one you have.
Little ripples.
This now is on telecom.
Looks like galvanized metal.
Stuff that takes up a lot of pages.
You Google corrugated, and it comes up showing that kind of roofing.
Barns and stuff, right? Yeah, okay.
The counter, corrugated metal, if you go down to the sewer plant, those buildings down there, the round ones, they have corrugated metal around them. That's what corrugated.
The the counter at Pete's Produce is corrugated. Give me a card. If you go to him at Pete's Produce.
Is that something?
There's a lot in the bar.
Yeah, I was gonna say, actually, the bar counter too would be, wouldn't it?
Green bins. Yeah, the same corrugated metal.
Is that something that would help to define what corrugated metal is in the ordinance or is it a common?
I don't think you would need to define it.
I would suggest, I would suggest that the other issue is if folks put a solar collector on their roof, there's, there are roofs that use solar collectors. That's not addressed in there that I saw. And those could be banned. And I've had a solar collector, and they can save you a lot of money, and, you know, it may be the way of the the future. So need to address that while it's in process, then have to add an amendment to it later.
A solar collector is one of those things that since it's not, the way the ordinance works is you have your principal lot uses, and then you have accessory uses that are things like, your house would be your principal use, and your accessory use would be detached garage. And there are also things that are an extra layer, like signs and things that aren't really either. They're just kind of extra. The the solar panels would probably be considered an accessory use, kind of like an, kind of like an accessory wind tower, if you had one of the home wind towers. That's a big deal in Brandon. Some guy wanted them, so they rewrote everything for him, and then he moved out of town. So they have accessory wind towers. So I imagine they'd be an accessory use, so you'd have to follow the accessory use standards. Generally, the standard there is, is it a customary and incidental use of the property? And your argument would be that it's becoming so. But ultimately, it would be up to the zoning administrator to determine that, yes, it is. They'd have, that would be an area where they would make the determination, whether it's customary and incidental. And if if they do, if they do the opposite of what you want, there's always appeal procedures within the ordinance as well. So some, if that's a big deal, we can spell out standards specifically in the ordinance for them.
Is the county director of equalization the zoning administrator for the city proper as well as the county? Or are you the zoning administrator for, good?
Under the new ordinance, I think the term in the ordinance is called authorized official. Some use zoning administrator, some, you can use whatever term you want. But that's something you all would, once, if, when this is adopted, you will, you'd want to probably do a resolution appointing that person, just to clarify that, just on the record that you have a person in that position to give them the power.
So someone, even if we don't have it specified in here, someone wants to put a solar panel on their roof, all they have to do is is come in here and make a presentation, and we would have to.
It would, it would, I'm trying to remember your ordinance specifically, since I deal with 46 of them. But they would make a presentation to your authorized official, so they'd come in to Pat, and they'd be like, we want to install a solar collector. So she would be like, well, this is an accessory use of the property. And is it, we'll look at the definition to be sure what it says. Customary, incidental, principal building or use. So what is, on page 69 in the definition. So there, there are certain accessory building standards in here as well at the start of chapter 10, but that's the main threshold, is it customary and incidental? So customary is kind of fungible. Incidental would have to be secondary, not the main focus, smaller than, kind of thing. Is, she'd have administrative discretion to say whether that is or isn't. And if it, if she determines that this is accessory, the next step would be the building permit. If she determines it's not, then it either is that, or they appeal, and that would probably go to the Board of Adjustment, which is you all.
And if they disagree with the Board of Adjustment, where does it go from there?
It would, you'd go to court.
The thing is, is you're talking accessory. Do you consider a furnace an accessory? This is, this solar roof provides electricity to to the primary residence. It's not a secondary residence, and it's, it's a primary. So if you're treating that solar collector as an accessory, are you also going to treat a furnace as an accessory? It's a semantic thing.
The furnace is enclosed within the.
So the solar, solar, the solar panels, the roofing solar panels are enclosed and are run down. It's, it's, there's an active product out there that it, it encompasses the whole roof, not just, not just a small section of the roof.
Generally, the principal use of the land includes everything fundamental or essential there, too. So like a park, your structures in the park, and your sandboxes, and your baseball field, you could argue those are, fundamentally make the park what it is. So you'd, you'd get to the point of is, are the solar collectors your sole source of electricity, or do you have? It, it would become a complicated thing of, are those? Or do you have, it, it would become a complicated thing of, are those absolutely vital, fundamental and necessary to the house? If it was your sole power source, you could argue, yes.
So if I understand this right, if somebody wants to have a business or build a new house in town, then they have to show their plan to the planning, planning-
Not if they're building a house.
Okay.
Everything that's a permitted use is, has been determined to be the most appropriate use of whatever that district is. Everything that's a conditional use is probably all right, but we want to take an extra step just to make sure, kind of thing. And you can add conditions to make sure it's all right to those.
But it'd be a problem to put a house up here, right?
That's right. It's only if it's out of its normal use.
Okay.
So you couldn't come to our office and say, you want to build a house right across the bay?
Right.
Because that's not zone residential.
Okay.
And if you really wanted to, you'd have to apply for a rezone. And that's also contained in here, the procedure for that. And then the, the planning, planning commissioner, the board of adjustment, whichever one is in there would determine whether that's appropriate to do for the city as a whole.
Because I mean, deep for doing things to their houses all the time.
Sure. But they're not necessarily putting a pole barn right in the middle of this residential, no. So there's, there's an example of the other direction.
Right, okay.
Are they your town's new city attorneys?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I should have introduced you.
One thing that's left open is adult oriented businesses. There was a case out of Sturgis or Spearfish, one of the S's out there, that it's, there was a place called Dick and Jane's Naughty Spot. It's still there. And the, the problem is in state law, S D L eleven A twelve, it does not define the threshold of what becomes a principal business purpose. And that court case basically said that you could not regulate it because at that point, unless you define that as just a commercial business. And currently, so state law is insufficient, so it's up to the city to come up with a threshold. So that's something we need you all to do, whether it's zero or five or, so.
I just wanted to clarify, was your question if someone's gonna put an addition on their home, do they need, they still need to get a building permit to do that?
But it does not bill for planning and zoning.
No, the authorized official, if it meets the criteria, can authorize the building permit. Doesn't have, but if there's questions, then they would have to come to the commission, so.
And if you want to see the court case out of Sturgis or Spearfish, I can send it to you, or I think Pat may have it, I guess I did that.
I think so.
Okay.
We'll take a look.
Thank you, Patrick.
We, I, just as you know how hypothetical, principal business purposes defined on seventy-nine has been five percent of stock or trade. But that's really something that you all should come up with. I think that was just thrown in based on our discussion, but it really should come from you all. That's the definition that Harrisburg has adopted based on what, some places use, Pennington County put it at, I think, forty percent, which seems very high, but-
Sam Bedley.
So, otherwise, here is what we have. And everything is subject to, a lot about zoning other than the permitted and additional and kind of like standard way it works. Everything is up to how much you want with forest, what you care about, kind of like corrugated metal, something you all care about, but maybe like Brandon wouldn't know. That kind of thing. They probably would, because Brandon cares about everything. But it's, it's all up to you. If you want your building's permit process to be a different way, a lot of small towns like Monroe, probably Mary, and when I get there tonight, they- Monroe doesn't really like their zoning administrator doing a whole lot of work. So the town board itself wants to approve everything that's structurally altered. But if it changes the site plan, the town board wants to review it. If it's just, uh, we're doing a remodel or we're just putting new siding, they have the zoning administrator do it. There's ways to break it off, or if you want Pat to do it all, you sure can. So there's a lot of tailoring it to what you all think is best, so.
So tonight we have our first reading. Then we will need to set a special meeting in February, um, oh, sorry, April, later in the month. So I can do a publish, publish that public hearing as well. And then, so those are the two motions we'll need tonight on this.
Well, I would like to make a motion to approve the first reading of the two thousand and eighteen planning and zoning ordinance. I'll say.
Do we have a second?
Yes, I'd-
Dave.
David, okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Right.
Opposed? Motion carried. Then we need to set, what, what date were you gonna make that?
Uh, the, um, I think it was the third Monday in April.
Why, why can't it be the next meeting? That would be amazing.
Well, if you wanted to be a count, if you'd rather, that's fine.
No special meeting, then?
Well, that would sure be nice not to have another special meeting after special meeting after special meeting.
The key thing is it has to be published, it has to actually physically appear in the newspaper for ten days prior to the meeting. So however, getting in the paper for ten days is-
Well, we could wait till May, uh, what's our meeting date gonna be in May?
Save the city two hundred and fifty dollars.
May seventh.
May seventh? We could wait till May seventh for the second reading.
All right.
That work?
I'll make the motion to do the second reading at the May meeting, the May seventh, nineteen, eight thousand and eighteen.
All second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Right.
Opposed? Motion carried. City employee updates. Fine, you're up.
Well, I'm sure you noticed the sweeper's been out around and around. It's working great. No issues with that. I also noticed I've been tearing some roads up pretty good with my pole planer, getting ready to fix them up before we chip seal. Uh, we'll just, it's gonna be a while before they get fixed, fixed, but we'll keep them smoothed out, grabbable, so. We'll probably start asphalt repair as soon as possible. I don't, I haven't made contact to either plant to see when they start opening, but the way this weather's going, it might be a little bit yet, so. Um, other than that, I don't know how many of you were on when we got complaints about Jurgensen's corner down here holding water. Uh, while I had that mill, I started to cut a waterway across and I ran into an old curving gutter that had been buried in asphalt. So I just exposed that, now water flows.
Oh.
So cheap, cheap fix. We gotta do a little repair on that corner, nothing big, but just asphalt was.
Thanks.
Uh, yeah, good news for one time. Um, the Larson concrete bid, this would be for a approximately sixteen by thirty pad on the west side of our shop. Currently, that's where we wash out the sweeper and any equipment we have in it. Basically turns into a mud hole every time we wash or it rains, because all that water just kind of comes off and sits in that alley until it gets, or valley until it gets away.
Can you tell me, what was the dimension again?
Sixteen by thirty by six inches with a half inch rebar, two foot on center, I believe. And, uh, the reason this came up is that straight sweeper came with the ability to flush out hydrants, but all that does is leave silt all over the road wherever we wash out. We don't have a real good spot to wash out, so I changed the fitting and we flush out with a one inch hose at the shop now. And it works just as good hydrant. But this sweeper, you have to put it to the ground to wash it out. You're not supposed to operate it in the up position. Uh, the salesman said you can mess stuff up, I guess, so. So anyways, we got about a twelve foot area now that is concrete and then it's mud. So you're basically washing half the machine on concrete, half on mud. But that, that slopes down and creates that valley and then we gotta clean all that mud out of there all the time. Otherwise, it just, it turns into a soup hole. So we had thought about that, this before doing it and we just, I don't know, it always kind of misses my mind on putting budgets in for the year. But what I'd like to do is take that concrete slab or add a better slope out from the shop and then do some building up so that the water will run away from the shop instead of along by the shop and cut a hole or cut a washout through the middle of our drive, so.
Is that gonna result in extra water going down the drainage to Mr. Quick's house?
Uh, it all ends up there anyways. It's just how, it's gonna change how it gets there, what the plans are thinking about doing.
And we've had issues with that before, so.
We have all that rip rap rock there now, which every year Lonnie moves back up to the surface and, so I think that's helped considerably because we're not pushing so much gravel and rock down through his driveway.
If we could get that to slope away from the shop instead of it all taking the same path, I think we'd cut down on how much silt gets in that face or down in that ditch also. Because a lot of that silt comes right off of our driveway, we're cutting, running through with washouts, so. And about every time you fix it, we get a big old rain again and it all takes off and they all, so.
Do you have any, uh, rain gutters on the building out there? I should know, but I-
There's, there's a little bit of gutter above the west door. I'm not sure about the door that's north of there. Well, yeah, there's nothing to really control it, it just all comes. I think if we had gutters, it'd get ripped off from the ice and the snowfalls.
Lonnie, did anything ever happen with our paving machine or has that not gone off yet?
Oh, yeah, I forgot that. Like, that just went live tonight on bidding.
Okay.
That'll be finalized on Wednesday, I believe. I'm not sure.
What category is that under?
It's under the construction.
Okay.
Did you get ahold of that gentleman that called?
Yeah, I did call him back.
Okay.
Some interest in it already, or?
Yeah, a fellow from Mississippi called me, so. As of right, before the meeting started, there was one bid on it.
It doesn't get active until the last hour or so anyway.
Yeah. So I believe you got Keith's bid in front of you, or I don't remember the price.
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-two or three.
Do we have any skin?
I can't remember whether we have any one. Uh, what's that, this, what, extra money? Of course, I guess this wouldn't just necessarily be the streets, would it? It would cover sewer, water, I mean, would it, would it, would it go across a number of different, the cost?
This would strictly be a general fund item because it's gonna be at the city shop property.
Is this the only bid that you've gotten on this?
Yeah, I asked for another one but didn't receive one, so. Typically, the other person, they are within fifty bucks of each other, so. I don't know, they must use the same calculator.
Larson Construction has done a lot of work for the city. They did all of that road repair up on six and Dakota in front of the library.
Twelve by thirty feet?
Uh, sixteen.
Sixteen.
Our door is fourteen, so we've got a foot extra on each side.
How thick is this slab?
Six inches.
You're talking about six yards, oh, no, six inches thick.
Six inches.
You're gonna write it nine yards, nine yards.
Yeah, it's the same as, the same thickness we did at six in Dakota.
About fifty-four square feet, six inches thick, four yard or four. How much is cement a yard now?
Ninety to a hundred bucks.
Yeah, you gotta figure about a hundred bucks a yard.
So you're half and half labor and concrete.
Yeah, so that's, that's a decent bid.
Yeah.
By the time you put the rebar in there too, in the farm, yeah, that's a decent bid. Well, can we go to motion, one or the other, to?
So long term, what, what problems does this solve?
Uh, basically, we'll be able to push the water away from the, push, but let the water flow away from the building instead of cutting through our driveway, creating more silt down the road and it'll help us to wash equipment off, so. Because right now, you're, even when I do the loader, I do the loader pretty much all in the mud, standing in the mud, blasting away. It's, I don't know, you can imagine what that's like. It's not much fun. But, and then, eh, in all actuality, it'll help me keep the shop a lot cleaner because every time I drive in that door, I track all that mud in, so.
This slab will be right to the west of the big door.
Yes. Yep.
I'll make the motion to, uh, okay the Larson Construction bid of twenty-two hundred and three dollars and twenty cents for the sixteen by thirty foot pad at the city shop.
All second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Right.
Are you opposed? Motion carried. Swimming pool, Wanda, you have to, or is somebody here from the swimming, oh!
Look, I don't know anything about it really.
I just seen swimming pool on there. I didn't know if you were gonna talk about that.
Well, we do, we did have one more application, but we do need to put an ad in the paper for more lifeguards. We need at least one more, if not two.
Okay.
And then we can look at those over and decide, but we do need a couple more lifeguards. I think we have enough W S I guards. We have a couple of pool managers that were willing to take that on again, so.
Is that the same manager we had last year?
Along with Sam Jensen, yeah, who did-
Okay.
The same thing.
Okay.
So I need an ad, uh, I think you have to have a motion to put an ad in the paper? For lifeguard?
I'm just going to do one.
Okay.
So in talking about the pool, which I know you guys probably feel we feed this to a let alone, but, um, we knew that you would want community input, that's what you asked. And so it was our decision to post it on the pool Facebook page. That way, it's the patrons who actually use the pool would get that information. And when I talked with Mr. Reed, he was the one that offered to, one of his classes, make it a math assignment. So they generated the survey, gave it around to the classes first grade through ninth grade and tallied the results and presented the results back to us. When that post went on the Facebook page, Jay Nygaard from Weersford called me and said, when Weersford remod, or rebuilt the pool, this slide was in their three foot, four foot section, or four foot depth. They took it out, it's sitting in his story jar right now, and he provided the pictures for us. I talked to Jerry Zymans, they are going to be declaring it surplus at their meeting tonight. And at that meeting, they will decide a rate of what they would charge us for this slide. So, the slide is approximately ten years old and I, um, I do not know a weight restriction on this yet. I will get more information or try to get more information on that, so.
Well, I assume if we could get a model number or something like that from it, we could find a manual or something for it, correct?
Well, I tried to find a mini Aquatherm, and I did not have success on that. And I did not have success on that. But what I, if you guys are in favor of doing this and. Jerry Zymans could not give me in a dollar amount, but what he said, it would be very, very reasonable to the city. And that was one of the comments in, that people gave us is, and, and also in talking with our lifeguards. The lifeguards had a concern of putting a slide in the deep end of the pool. Because the slide attracts the little ones who maybe don't know how to swim. And if they dump into the deep end of the pool, that could be an issue. So this seems like it is a compromise of what was originally proposed, so.
So we'd need to have this put in the.
Shallower end of the pool.
Shallower end, four foot. I, we, it says what, this is a sea wave model by Aquatherm. I would think that we maybe could find some specs as to how deep the water has to be.
I, if this is something that the council is interested in pursuing, then I would talk to MCNR school.
So what, what, what side do you think this, this has to go on the east side, wouldn't it?
That is my assumption.
Because I don't think there's enough room between the fence and.
It's hard to gauge from this picture. But yes, I'm assuming it has to go on the east side.
It looks like, I mean, it looks pretty steep and it's just straight. I don't know. I, I really would like to have the specs, like you said.
Well, just counting steps there, knowing you've got a seven and seven-eighths inch maximum rise there. Got about ten steps, so you've got no more than.
Six.
Seventy-five inches, so six feet of height. To the bottom of the steps roughly. So you got a ten-foot-high unit there roughly with the railing and everything.
But well, I mean, a kid that's going down there, they're going just straight and they're just being launched straight out.
There's a, there's a dip at the end.
I, I see that.
A little, not much, but.
And then that's a double-edged sword too. If it's tilted up too high, all they do is skip across until they hit the other side. That's where all of this depth and width has to be calculated.
That's why I wanted to talk with MCNR. If you're interested, if you're not interested, then we'll just move on.
Well, certainly, if it's a viable option, then.
So if we do the diving board at twenty-three-nine, there's a possibility that we might be able to get. A diving board and a slide for somewhere in the neighborhood of that twenty-five-thousand-dollar slide.
That is correct.
Well, I'd say if that's a possibility, it's definitely something worth looking into. But I, I mean, we would definitely wanna see specs and numbers and the price and all that before we decide one way or the other.
And the diving board, we probably gotta get moving on that, don't we?
I would like a decision, if you don't want the slide or you want more time to think about the slide. But I need to have some sort of a decision because Lonnie will be filling the pool May fifteenth. And we will need to put our order in with MCNR and get a time for the diving board to get installed.
I would say, yeah, go ahead with the diving board and get more information on the slide. Would be my thought too.
Did you say tonight, they're gonna make a decision, Beersford?
That is correct.
So they may, they may make this decision for us. You don't know. If they come back and say we want twenty-eight thousand.
Yeah.
Thank you. I still have bye-bye.
Well, I would think that we would wanna make a decision tonight on whether to put in the diving board.
Well. Lifeguards don't want a big slide down at that end, then boy, I can see that happening. Some kid goes scooting down that, "Look, mom, I can't swim." That's what they're afraid of.
Another thing that someone brought up, I saw on Facebook, that was, I thought was a good point, is. A slide might, looks like more attractive at first, but I feel like the novelty will wear off on that quicker. Because there's only so much you can do. At least with a diving board, you know, you can jump, you can do flips, you can do, you know. I feel like maybe that would be a better long-term option anyway, because you'll get more fun out of it over the years than. The slide might wear off pretty quick and I won't give it.
You will have a pump with the water to go down the slide too. Don't forget that.
Eventually that's, that's gonna break down.
Okay, would someone like to make a motion and do we purchase the slide, or the diving board, I'm sorry?
I'll motion to purchase the diving board for twenty-three thousand and a half, three dollars from MCNR.
I'll second.
Okay, we have the motion and the second. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carried. We will postpone the purchase of the one from Beersford till we get more information. Mike Burke. Right here.
He's not here. Um, Mike has been helping us do work on streets and snow removal and whatnot. He'd prefer to have a set wage when he's not CDL. Like right now, our CDL wage is fifteen dollars an hour as a, what do you call it? Eddie?
I just.
What do you call the?
I just call them a non-CDL wage.
Okay, but I mean.
Contract labor.
Contract labor, that's what I was looking for. Anyways, that's the only wage we have for him. And he's gonna be probably trying, helping us out some this summer with mowing. Even when he's running skid steer during snowfall, that's not really CDL, but he gets paid contract labor. He'd, he'd prefer a wage, correct?
Yes, he would.
And the mowing part's coming into play because Short does a great job, but there's, he does go out of town a lot. And it's hard for Dale and I to keep up with that and all of our other responsibilities. So he'd basically be filling for Short. And be helping me do asphalt this year. Asphalt's becoming a two-man deal. But when we're doing asphalt, Dale gets called away a lot, so it becomes two-man on three piece of equipment. But, so now I've narrowed it down to two people. Our favorer will do the, do the packing and the laying and I just need a guy in the truck, so. But basically, I'm just after, hopefully you guys can set a wage for him.
What's Short's salary this year?
I believe he's ten eighty-two.
So would, Mike, how much is Mike Lonnie?
I really don't know.
I don't think we should pay him any more than we're paying Short, if he's not be doing the same thing that Short does when he's not here.
He's just happy to do, have something to do during the day.
Yeah. But I wouldn't think that we would wanna pay him more than we do the other guy.
Right.
What's Short's wages? Ten eighty-two?
He's been with the city.
All the time.
For a long time.
But you think Mike might work into replacing Short as well?
Unfortunately, he might.
Short will work as long as he loves short. A little bit less than Short.
Ten fifty, ten and a quarter.
Ten and a quarter, I like that.
I like that number.
Motion to hire Mike Burke at ten dollars and twenty-five cents an hour for non-CDL jobs.
I'm, I'm sorry, I don't understand the justification behind the wage difference.
Experience time. Short has worked up to that wage for years and years. He's been with us a long time.
I will second Lance's motion to hire Mike Burke at ten dollars and a quarter for non-CDL jobs. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carried. City fully updated.
Dale wasn't gonna make it tonight. He didn't really have any updates unless he told Pat.
The only thing he wanted to bring to your attention is we did have a water leak out by St. Erickson's. And that is, was repaired. Waterman Doc Oak came, made the repair. It was twelve hundred dollars. And Wanda has been updating all the sewer rates. She does that the first two, after the first two months of the year, she sets the sewer rates based on usage for all the patrons in town. And that gap is complete now.
Any more on water? Okay, city fully updates, please chief.
First of all, stats. I apologize for not getting your own copy when I, I got it all done besides, I think, four traffic tickets and four dogs. And most of those are Officer Clarence. I, it's been a busy last half month for me. My grandpa passed away and then Craig won the national championship, so I went down there for that. And then the next week, came back and I was sick and I was gonna do it yesterday and we had a break-in in town and spent all day doing, working on that, so. But I just, I got most of it in. I had about sixteen incidents, mostly not, non-traffic. Clarence, it shows only one, but he had, he handed out most of the dog tickets and stuff, so. We, I think we're down to like two or three people that haven't licensed their dogs, so. We're getting there, so. And then Nelson had nine contacts, mostly traffic. I have not been able to meet with the lawyers yet, just because of the reasons I just said. I just haven't been in the office during the week. I've been working, pretty much getting to work Saturdays, Sundays. And then during the week, I've either had someone passing away, a big family event, or been sick. I will get with them this, this month, so.
You're talking about the parking issue?
About the parking issue, yes, so, so I don't have any update on that from when it was last. I talked to Patty and everything too. I just need to sit down with the lawyer and draw up that resolution or whatever we call it. And then the third part, I'd like to go into executive session for like last month.
Talking about C?
C, yes, sir. Yep, personnel.
Okay, seven twenty-two. I'll make a motion to go into executive session.
I'll make the motion to enter executive session pursuant to SDCL one-dash-twenty-five-dash-two-dash-one.
Two second. Melissa, okay. All right, we got a motion and a second. Go into executive session. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? We're in executive session at seven twenty-two. Anything before that? Okay. Approve the warrants. Motion to approve warrants.
Well, beans, I had the biggest one. I'll make a motion that we approve the warrants.
I'll sec, I'll second the motion to approve warrants. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? HR school, June fifth, sixth, two thousand eighteen, and June sixth to the ninth in Sioux Falls.
As I had mentioned in the past, I have never gone to the HR portion of the conference. Because our, the finance officer portion is three days and I just didn't feel comfortable being away for four days. But it is in Sioux Falls this year. And so I gave the agendas for both the HR schooling and the finance officer school. And this year, I would like to attend both.
Looks like there's just a little tiny bit of overlap. I mean, you gotta, you gotta pick and choose just a little bit on the sixth, huh?
Uh, no, it's, um, the, I don't need to attend the Banyan.
User group, okay.
Because we don't use Banyan.
Gotcha.
So really.
Oh, that's that lines software? That's the, the county?
Software, yeah. And so ours starts at noon on the sixth. Or at least the finance officer portion starts at noon.
And what are rooms for you? Where are you gonna drive?
Uh, if I drive, I would probably just drive on that Tuesday. Come home Tuesday night and then stay up there, I might stay Thursday. Because they do have a banquet in the evening. And it's, it is a good time to network with the other finance officers around the area.
Is that fifty-five plus tax for both or just for? It says fifty-five plus tax on the HR school, but.
They normally block off a room, a section of rooms for us. And it would be at the same hotel. It's all downtown, holidaying.
I think it's a good idea to send someone to go to the HR. Class.
Class.
One class.
It is.
So do you get like a certification for going?
We do get a cert, we, we do get a.
A sort of, yeah.
Yeah.
I think it's.
And they do have, the Wednesday morning session is a panel discussion of HR anything. So if there's any oddities that we want or that you want me to ask, let me know and.
Well, just like we mentioned earlier, a little bit of networking goes a long way. You may just run into somebody and have that contact person to be able to say. I don't know, has any idea what to do about this? What do you do? You know, so.
Well, I'll make the motion to send Pat to those two school sessions, both HR and the FO. June fifth and through, well, June fifth through.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carried. And we need one on mid-state conference. Motion to approve sending the conference rate of thirty-five dollars per person.
This actually was brought to me first by Chuck Sunstrom. And then the next day, I got the actual flyer in the mail. He had gotten it originally and brought me, brought it into me and then the mayor got one and I got one the next day. And Chuck had told me that many years ago, the, a representative from the chamber went to this conference. And it's talking about economic development, how to grow your community. And they bring in, as all conferences, different speakers on different things. And the rate is quite reasonable. It's a, it's a one-day expense, thirty-five dollars per person. It's just in South Sioux City. I think it would be something worth attending again. So I just put it out there. If any of you would like to go, we can go together. I'm also gonna throw it out to the chamber as well, if any of you want to attend.
What's the date?
April twelfth.
Is that Thursday?
Eighteenth.
What? Oh, I'm sorry, the, do by twelfth.
And I know Rita Anderson because she's the gal that was very instrumental in getting the, um, she's from De Smith. And she got the community center built up in De Smith. And she's the one that gave us the tour of their community center. And she's one of the speakers.
I, I would be willing to go.
Okay, we're gonna need a motion to approve sending. We don't know how many.
Can we do like we did, like you made that motion last time, up to X number of people from the city?
You could do that.
Let's give them five.
Up to five.
I'll make that motion that we approve up to five people to attend the mid-states conference at thirty-five dollars per person.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carried. Library update annual report.
Um, one of the things that this says, I am required to do an annual report. The library is also required to do an annual report and Dee has done her report done. And one thing that she's been trying to work with at the school level is to offer wireless, free wireless to the patrons. And she's not been able to work with, um, she's Johansson at the school because they just didn't wanna overload that school network or put another leg of the router out there to the public. So we're gonna be having a meeting. So we're going to be having a meeting, I think either this week or next week, uh, with Alliance. And, um, we're going to be discussing getting wireless internet up there for the public. We have all those NOCs, people come in and ask questions, how to use a NOC or might have a little issue with something, and she can't even answer those questions because she's not on wireless internet up there. And it, it's another way to get more traffic into library.
The network that is part of the library right now is part of the local area network that is the schools?
That is correct.
So if you had an access point that had its own specific web key that segregates, I mean, they're relatively inexpensive, they're a piece of cake to manage anymore. And I'm assuming maybe that's what mid-state, or, excuse me, Alliance Communications is going to probably try to provide.
The-
A new router, or?
Yes, we'll have to buy the router.
Right.
And we'll have to pay for the internet connection. Because the school is not feeling comfortable about opening up their router to give us even an old, just a channel, so.
Yep, I understand.
So that will change her budget because that'll be on the city side.
Yeah.
Okay, executive session if needed, do we, anybody need an executive session?
Yes, we do.
We do?
Yep.
Okay.
And I'll make the motion again to enter executive session pursuant to SBCL one dash twenty-five dash two dash one personnel. I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, we go into executive session at seven forty-six. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're in executive session. Motion carried.
Seven forty.
Seven forty-six.
Lewis and Clark, they're going to get their water from Lewis and Clark. And so South Lincoln's Water is purchasing the Lenox wells, basically to help the citizens around the Lenox area. And they're doing a new, uh, water treatment facility at South Lincoln's facility that will be open in the fall of twenty nineteen. And just in case you were ever curious, PVC lines last in forty, seventy-five, two hundred years.
Okay, uh, Dragonfly Massage Studio, opening April fourth, four to seven PM.
It's an open house, we have, um, where Candace used to have her massage studio, now has been taken over by Tanya Rasmussen, and she is open-
Tanya?
Yeah, she went to, she's been going to school for quite a while, the, I don't know how many years it takes or whatever, but I know she's been in it, in it a lot.
She's having an open house, um, August, April fourth, from four to seven. So someone will stop in and visit with her, and she has it decorated really nice. She's revamped a few things in there, and she'll have door prizes, so.
And snacks.
Okay, Total Stop is going to have their open house, April sixth, from eleven to two. Food, drinks, whatever, drinks, huh?
Well, they are, they're giving wine samples.
No beer, sorry. Spring clean up, April thirteenth to the twenty-ninth, Roll Off will be across the street here, normal place. Fair board update?
Um, the last, that meeting I wasn't here, um, I was at the Lions Club. I did that, the fair award. And it was interesting because the Lions Club had the best year ever in their stand last year. And I talked to them about the fairgrounds, how pretty much, you know, two weeks ago, somebody already been repercussion about that they're selling the fairgrounds again. But we assured them, no, we are not. But anyway, to make a long story short, they weren't aware I told the patrons that we will be doing this year, and they voted to sponsor three events at the fair. And will be giving us back about eight hundred dollars towards events.
Wow.
So that was, and now we have fair board here three weeks from tonight, so.
Okay.
Uh, just a point of interest, kind of along with the fair, Farmers Co-op Society will be pursuing the railroad to buy a-
Yay.
Stretch of road, true.
Good.
Yeah.
Because they didn't know. But I happened to have a meeting with a manager, the new general manager, last week, and, uh, I made sure he knew.
Okay. That's quite a building they built there, by the way.
It looks nice.
It's, it's real super nice.
So, so they're, they're going to try and buy some of that-
Buy that property where the road is. It's a road. That railroad right away. They're going to pursue the railroad and see if they can get something done there.
Good for them.
Okay, HRC, Dan, you got anything on that?
Not really.
Oh, okay. We've got things scheduled out for the mowing, we've got fertilizer coming for the first round anyway.
Kind of modified the way we're going to do the lawn mowing, but coming, just, yeah. Play by ear, at least initially for the spring, so.
Okay, community building update, you got anything on that, Pat?
Um, nothing at this time.
Right now, okay. Uh, updating volunteer roster for Quirpin's Comp, anything on that?
As far as I know, no changes.
Okay.
What about Mike Burke? But he won't be a volunteer.
No, he, no.
Uh, at the golf meeting, Rich Ackland came up to me and said that if we need a volunteer, pick up sticks or do something at the golf course, he, he could call him, so maybe we should add his name.
Okay.
Volunteer list, Rich, Richard Ackland.
How'd he spell his last name?
AK-LAND.
Okay, and we'll need a motion to-
I'll make that motion to, to add Richard Ackland to the volunteer roster. I'll second David's motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, executive session if needed. Any need an executive session?
No, but I will make a motion to adjourn.
Okay. We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
I'll second Nora's. Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.
Thank you, Chief Mayor.
Seventeen.